Yes.
Yes, okay. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting was sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on April 11th, 2018, and was posted on the bulletin board of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey on April 11th, 2018, and has been maintained, remained continuously posted as required by law. Fire exits are to my left and to my right. If you come up to speak, please speak into the microphone, and assistive listening devices are available. Tina, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Again.
(laughing).
(inaudible).
Roll call, please.
Mayor Bill Mittler.
Here.
Councilman Fine.
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Here.
Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Hirsch.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun.
Here.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz.
Here.
Borough Attorney, Borough Administrator.
Here.
I do.
Okay. May, Clerk, would you report on a resolution to approve the amendments to the 2018 municipal budget and schedule a public hearing?
I hope not to put everyone to sleep. Whereas the local municipal budget for the year 2018 was approved on the 20th of March, whereas the public hearing on said budget has been held as advertised, whereas it is desired to amend said approved budget. Now therefore be it resolved by the Mayor and Borough Council of the Borough of Highland Park that the following amendments to the approved budget of 2018 be made. Current fund general appropriations, the first number I read is from, the second number is to. Operations within CAPS, Borough Administration S&amp;W, $192,610, $154,710. Financial Administration OE, $143,400, $133,400. Annual audit, $26,950, $28,450. Assessment of taxes S&amp;W, $59,059, $49,059. Information Technology OE, $115,500, $113,000. Police, S&amp;W, $3,465,435, $3,410,893. First aid squad contribution, $31,000, $5,000. Public works functions, street and road maintenance OE, $111,700, $121,700. Uniform construction code OE, $17,810.96, $15,290.96. Communications S&amp;W, $91,098, $98,898. Communications OE, $32,600, $31,100. Contingent, zero to $16,785. Deferred charges and statutory expenditures municipal within CAPS, Social Security, $290,100, Deferred charges and statutory expenditures excluded from CAPS, prior year deficit water and sewer operating fund, zero to $86,067. Dedicated revenues. Special items of general revenue anticipated with prior written consent of the Director of Division of Local Government Services, additional water and sewer rents, $1,928,291.88, Deficit general budget, zero, $86,067. Appropriations for water and sewer utility, operating other expenses, $2,530,993, $2,403,553. Capital improvement fund, $50,000, $100,000. Be it further resolved that two certified copies of this resolution be filed in the office of the Director of the Division of Local Government Services for certification of the 2018 local municipal budget so amended. Be it further resolved that this complete amendment in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 40A:4-9 be published in the Home News Tribune in the issue of April 27th, 2018, and that said publication contain notice of public hearing on said amendment to be held at Borough Hall on May 15, 2018 at 7:00.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject the resolution to approve amendments to the 2018 municipal budget and schedule a public hearing?
Motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Yes.
Councilman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz.
Yes.
Clerk, could you report on introduction of an ordinance to amend the water and sewer ordinance for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Highland Park, Chapter 328, Sewer and Water, has been introduced in writing by the Public Works and Public Utilities Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
I'll move to adopt.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Yes.
Councilman George.
I'd like to make some comments for the public and for everyone's information. This is an increase in the water and sewer rates that will result in an increase of approx... This is an increase in the water and sewer rates that will result in an increase of approximately $48 as to both your water and sewer rates effective with this quarter. The problems that we encountered, that we began to encounter last year were that there was a significant drop in revenue in water and sewer which were not achieved in 2017. However, at the same time, we've experienced four rate increases since 2011, and the rates had from Middlesex Water and the county sewer system that were not reflected in rates that were being increased to charge the users. As a result, we've, in a situation where we have to balance the budget and we have to balance the water and sewer bills to make them pay their way in the future. Obviously, we cannot anticipate the rates going down at some point in the future. I'd like to note some of the state requirements that have resulted in an increase, including the Water Quality Assessment Act, which requires significant studies and maintenance to be done, and assessment act, study has to be done for the water system itself. In addition, we discovered, starting last year, when meeting with administration in the Water Company, that, and I've said this before, we have significant water losses and significant revenue losses. There is, we are losing revenue for unaccounted water. We are also losing water through possible infiltration, which also has a likelihood of increasing our sewer rates because water is just literally, literally flowing through the system and out without ever being billed or used. So moving forward, we found it necessary to increase the rates to reflect the use. In addition, this additionally caused a shortfall, which rather than burden the taxpayer in the general tax rate, we made adjustments for virtually all of this through the imposition of a surcharge of $13 per month on water and sewer, which will end on December 31st. As a result, you just heard us talk about an amended budget, the administration went back into some fairly significant budget analysis which resulted in more significant budget reduction so that the taxpayer per se does not bear a rate. Although we can say that everyone in town is a water consumer, we have to separate out the roles of taxpayer versus a user. The water and sewer rates are a user-based tax. You use water, you pay for it. What the difference is, is everyone pays a tax at a certain rate. However, so Councilwoman Wolkowitz's property tax might be less than mine, might be less than Councilman Fine's, but our water is based upon our use. So you can let your roses go, like I do, and grow natural plant reserve plants that they give out every year for free, or you can water your lawn every day if you wish, but it's a user-based tax. You pay for what you use, and therefore the rate structure has been adopted. But as I say, we have managed as well through good management of this particular problem starting last year to keep that increase to a $48 per quarter, and again, that is for both water and sewer. Those are both of those services with the $13 surcharge which will start in the next quarter and will end in the last quarter. Thank you, Mayor. I vote yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Hirsch?
Yes, and I would just like to add that, I just wanted to thank Council President George, Mayor Bill Mittler, Borough Administrator Terry Hovara, and all of council for working tirelessly on getting these numbers to a more palatable level. It was a lot of hard work and something that I think a lot of us were uncomfortable with early on, but now am comfortable out of necessity to vote yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
And thank you, Councilwoman George, for your explanation, because I'm sure the public has questions.
Absolutely.
And thank you all for your hard work on this, and yes.
The only thing I want to add to this discussion is Councilman George has been working with the Borough Administrator on some plans to ensure that we fix this problem going forward, and in future meetings they'll be reporting on some steps that they'll be taking to ensure that water is, usage is reported properly and that we start addressing some of our infrastructure issues regarding our water and sewage. So, thank you, all of you, for your hard work on all of this. Clerk, would you report on the introduction of an ordinance to provide for a surcharge for metered water usage for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance providing for a surcharge for metered water usage calendar year 2017 has been introduced in writing by the Public Works and Public Utilities Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
May I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
I move to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Fine.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin.
Yes.
Councilman George.
As I explained, this is the second part, this is the surcharge. I vote yes.
Councilman Hirsch.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Chohun.
No.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz.
Yes.
Okay. I'm about to open the floor for public discussion.
Mayor, if I can just speak to one issue before we go into public discussion.
Sure.
It is a special council meeting, and we are meeting, today is April 24th, and we commemorate the memory of the victims of the Armenian genocide. The Armenian genocide began 103 years ago on the night of April 24th, 1915. The Armenian genocide was the centrally planned and systematically executed deportation and murder of 1.5 million Christian Armenians, Greeks, and Assyrians by the Ottoman Turkish government from 1915 to 1923. Per a 2007 New Jersey Armenian genocide affirmation resolution signed by then-Governor Cody, on April 24th, 1915, the Ottoman Turkish government arrested more than 200 Armenian community leaders in Constantinople. Then the Armenian people were systematically subject to deportation, expropriation, abduction, torture, massacre, and starvation. Hundreds of thousands of Armenians were forcibly removed from their homes and deported to the Syrian desert, where the majority of the deportees died of dehydration and starvation. By 1918, an estimated 1.5 million Armenians had perished, while hundreds of thousands had become homeless and stateless refugees. By 1923, Asia Minor and historic West Armenia had been expunged of its Armenian population. Despite overwhelming documentation by historians, up until today, Turkey has sought to both enforce an international gag rule against truthful affirmation of the Armenian genocide and to obstruct a just international resolution of this still unpunished crime. As Congressman Frank Cologne tweeted today, "April 24th should be a day that the United States and nations around the world commemorate the Armenian genocide. We must honor those who suffered by acknowledging the truth." Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Josh. Any public discussion?
Tina Weishouse, 143 North Fifth Avenue. So I want to thank you for that commemoration statement. So this is on the water thing. So I don't, this is, this was a first reading, right? It's going to come up for another vote? Is that, am I right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, so that sounds like a lot of money to me for an average homeowner, and I'm wondering, so it's $48 per quarter plus a surcharge of $13 per quarter or per month? Did I get that wrong? The surcharge is per month? Suzie, you're shaking your head.
The surcharge is per month, that's correct.
So that's 216, no, 13 times 12 is...
No, it's only three quarters. It's only three quarters.
It's $156 for the typical family, plus the... Plus the rate increase. Yeah. Right.
And the surcharge will end on December 31st.
Okay. So, is there any, you know, possibility of exempting some households that can't afford that increase? Because that's a sizable increase for some people living on fixed incomes. I don't, that's been done before around tax increases and...
Just a couple of thoughts, because believe me, I've been thinking about this a lot. I just, a couple of things just to keep, not to minimize the impact. The way our rates work, they're for minimum users, you know, which are typically small family units or one person, who, we have a flat charge is how that works. So just to give you some perspective, the, for those who use the minimum, which is zero to 799 cubic feet per quarter, while the increase is still the same percent increase, that adds up to $15 per quarter. So just to give you some perspective, it's not nothing if you're on a fixed income, I'm not trying to minimize it, but just to put that into a little perspective, and that actually Councilwoman Kim Chohun's suggestion, the second part to my answer is, I'm looking into that NJShares program. I'm not overly optimistic that, it's a program that's, it's a nonprofit group that's there to help connect lower-income people in New Jersey to resources to offset their utility bills. I don't know if Highland Park residents are eligible, and I'm trying to get a good grip on that, because I know that's going to be something we want to have a better answer to when the rate rolls out.
Okay. All right. And I have to say, I wasn't paying 100% attention, but I don't, I don't really understand why we're, what is, could somebody explain it again?
So, you know, let me, let me read to you what I wrote, read the last time, but people didn't, we didn't talk about all of this, so we're sort of in the abstract last time, and hopefully this will explain it a little. We identified an issue with the water sewer utility billing, and our anticipated revenues for 2017 were not met. First of all, Highland Park water rates were not increased in seven years despite the fact that costs went up. Second of all, in fact, our cost of buying water, the rates that we pay Middlesex Water, have increased four times since the rate increase. None of those increases were passed on to residents or businesses in town. Additionally, New Jersey mandates that Highland Park purchase a minimum quantity of water whether or not we actually use it. So in this last year, water usage was down, yet our minimum requirement of purchase was up, so there was that gap. But there's more. On top of all of this, Middlesex County Utility Authority has increased the rates for processing our sewage. And finally, due to infrastructure deficiencies, we anticipate possible inflow and infiltration This is editorial now. I'm dismayed to say that these items did not come to our attention until they were uncovered by the Borough Administrator. I do not even want to see the Borough in the position of discovering any unanticipated shortfalls again. I've asked for swift action to prevent this from ever happening again. As one quick fix, I've called for a quarterly review of our progress against our budget beginning this year. We haven't done that before. And I've asked that Council President Phil George work with the Borough Administrator and Middlesex Water on fixing our infrastructure issues, and they have been tirelessly working with an outside organization. Phil, if you want to talk to that a little bit?
The Infrastructure Bank, we're working with the, as a matter of fact, I spoke with one of our contacts at Middlesex Water Sunday at the, at Earth Day regarding the next phase of our planning. The initial planning is, has been with Middlesex Water. We've done everything from review, the GIS mapping of the town, their records going back to when the water and sewer were installed in the early 1900s. We've then worked with, with them to develop plans as to what we need to do to meet the Water Quality Assessment Act and our, and our own assessments as well, lined up equipment to borrow from them which we can do ourselves to save costs, then taken those plans which our Borough Administrator has been working with us to develop to the State's Infrastructure Bank, formerly the Environmental Infrastructure, is now self-funding because the loans that they've been doing and the bonds that they've been converting over the last 25 years are now self-sustaining to the program. We put in an application for that in order to fund some of the infrastructure problems that we need to take care of. But in the meantime, we are also, in essence, we now have, I wouldn't call it a monthly meeting, we'd call it a bimonthly meeting where we meet with them. In addition, John and, and Robert are two designated contacts for Highland Park and Middlesex Water, and I converse about once a week on what is, just generally, what's going on, what do we need to know about, was there a leak, have you found more leaks, talking about new metering programs, some of the more modern meters. Part of the infrastructure going forward is to look at the new modernized meters, which also have a methodology, which is very technical, I have to admit, to determine whether there are actually, there are leakage problems within the household so that people aren't paying for, for water that they don't use. One of the beneficiaries of sustainable Highland Park, the Environmental Commission and STACS water reduction programs is me. My water usage is averaging about half of what is normal, so with every, we think that one of the ghosts that's going on, it may be very minor at this point, is anticipated revenues were down because everybody's saving water. But in the meantime, we know we are losing up to 30, between 30 and 34% of that water. So these are all the things that we're doing. We're looking at every piece of the puzzle, not just, oh, the rates went up, so we'll just fix it, we'll raise them. Also should indicate that going forward, one of the, the programs that we are implementing is capital improvement to create a reserve. These structures will all be looked at again next year. The rating, the surcharge will sunset, will be done on December 31st. It's been calculated on 2017 actual, not anticipated on the actual, so that will be done. At that time, we'll be looking at the rates, but we will also have in place our, our insurance programs, not insurance, but our ensuring that, A, the problem doesn't remain undetected, B, that the rates accurately reflect, reflect usage, which they haven't. In essence, for seven years, the Borough was subsidizing water rates. And then we will also be building in a capital improvement plan to start actually proactively building in reserves for improvements, for repairs, and for looking forward to even such things as when redevelopment begins to make our water and sewer usage look like a different program.
Okay, that, that was helpful to me, and I hope to the people watching this on TV. Just one question. If we're, if we are actually moving towards water conservation and we fix our leaks, then we will be using less water.
Right.
Than we are, I mean, if you, 30% of our water is going to leaks, then we can be conserving more water using less water. But we still have to pay a minimum amount.
Well, that, that adjusts, it doesn't, it adjusts in rather large bites, like annually, but that does adjust. So we, I'm not sure that it may, we may be able to adjust in 2019, but I believe that the adjustments will be significant for all of these reasons. The biggest adjustment problem is from the loss. But remember, we think, based upon our numerous discussions, review of documents from Middlesex Water, that approximately of that 30% that gets lost, we think that probably half of that is lost revenue, which means that water is somehow not being billed. We have old meters, we have some really old-fashioned, large water mains servicing larger installations, so that, and there are methodologies which we are going to be using. In fact, I discussed that with TPW at my regular meeting, early morning meeting with them, about large main water meters which actually measure against what the meter is reading using ultrasound technology, so we've already started that.
Borough Administrator, do you want to add to that?
The only thing, I guess I just, I just want to make sure it's clear, the, the state establishes a minimum daily consumption, it is based on your worst day, it's like designing the parking lot for Thanksgiving sales, Black Friday or something. And because of that loss that the Councilman just explained, I think if we can start to document our, and, and get rid of the leaks, like you said, we can then, and substantiate our actual consumption, we can go back to the department, but they're looking at what we're buying from Middlesex Water, and they're saying, well, that's how much you need then on your worst day, and that's, that establishes our minimum daily gallonage. So certainly, I think, all the projects that Councilwoman George just outlined, we're targeting kind of out of the gates, either revenues that may be getting lost because the meters are deficient, they, they're not owned by the Borough, we own the small meters, not the large ones, so that's what we're looking to kind of get under our belts. And then by establishing an asset management plan, which is required by that Water Quality Accountability Act from the state, we'll have a five-year program that we will have a course of action to address water leaks, water loss, and it's, it's kind of like your old house, it's going to be, this has got to be just every year, what are we doing? Because there's, it's an old system, and there's going to be, we're always going to need to be maintaining, but we, we have to make up that revenue from last year because we were in a negative. And so we got to get into a positive position so that we can reinvest in the system, and that's where we're trying to get. So I hope that helps.
Okay, just, yeah, that does help. So just one more question. Is there smart technology per household that if we invested in new meters, since you're saying we pay for the small meters, so that's in the home?
Well, the Borough owns the small meters, and those will be, that's probably down the line project, we're going to, those are getting old too. And so as we look at it, the smarter meters, like Councilman George said, they can actually detect if it's a leak that's in the house versus in the, in the line leading to the house versus the Borough, you know, and... and because the Borough, the ownership of the line is also one of those issues that is going to be an issue. But we figured, why don't we start with what is a relatively small number of accounts, but they account for a huge portion of our consumption, making sure those meters are accurate, seeing how that, how that cleans up over time, but then I hope it will also encourage homeowners and larger consumers to look at their fixtures. I mean, that, there are some pretty basic things that you can now go to Home Depot and buy that, you know, limit your, that really drastically reduce probably the things that Councilman George has put in his house to get his bills so low. Uh, so, part of it is, we're paying for the real costs of it, and if you don't like the cost, then you got to look at your consumption and see how to, to bring it into line, uh, with what you, you know, what you really need to be using, and I know I have a lot of room for improvement personally.
Right, maybe Sustainable Highland Park could do some education on water.
That would be great.
You know, because when I, I did a little thing for Earth Day, and it said amount of water usage per, you know, taking a bath, taking a shower, and it said ten gallons per minute for a shower, and my husband looked at that and he said, oh no, that's really old. He said, it's now about two point five.
If you're using a new fixture.
I, I had, yeah, I was using some, some list that was not up to date, and, um, so, you know, I don't know how many people have the water restrictors on their shower.
Right, and there's just a lot of kind of very affordable things, you know, down to filling a gallon with water and putting it in the tank of your toilet if you don't want to replace the toilet, that kind of, you know, there's a lot of things I think we could message through Sustainable Highland Park.
Madam Chairman, uh, Madam Chairman, as your liaison, I might suggest to you that an agenda item now that you're wrapping up, and by the way, the, the sign is fantastic, I have not forgot, I even, I even have them in my old MG, and I have them in the saddlebags of my, my old BMW.
Your reusable bags.
My reusable bags, but I suggest, especially since the theme for this year's Earth Day was water, that you may want to seriously consider what Sustainable Highland Park can teach us for this, uh, on one of the coming agendas.
Yeah, okay.
And by the way, congratulations on a wonderful Earth Day event on Sunday.
The weather.
It's the number one factor.
Any other public discussion? Abby?
Hi, welcome back.
Oh, yeah.
Different. I have a few questions. So with the budget, is it finalized now, or is it still being voted on?
Uh, we will, we will have a final, uh, vote at the next council meeting, is it?
Fifteenth.
The fifteenth.
And there will be a public hearing at that point, too.
Okay, so I had, um, a couple of questions. Um, I know we've talked, I've talked to a couple of people about the, having a new website in this year, so where does that fall in the budget? I took a quick look, um, at the budget.
It's there.
Okay.
I fought for that.
So how much is allocated towards?
Oh, you're going to test my, my, I want to say twelve thousand, but I don't, it's in the order of magnitude, twelve to twelve.
Still being pursued this year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because, remember transparency is our fifth objective for the year.
Okay, and, uh, yeah, I just, I had tried to look and I didn't see it.
It wouldn't be a special, it's, it's in the communications line, it's in the other expense line of communications.
And, um, maybe just for clarification, because I don't understand how this works, how does a budget get passed so late in the year for the current calendar year, and how do the things, maybe, maybe this is a separate discussion, but how, what about the things that were already used up until now?
So CFO, would you like to answer that question?
Ron, maybe get to a microphone.
Ron, you have to get to the microphone.
That might be too complicated of a question.
That's a good question.
No, the Borough follows a statutory calendar.
Microphone.
Microphone.
New Jersey statutes dictate the, uh, timing of the budget. Unlike other entities, the budget is, uh, put together and, uh, worked on during the fiscal year. So the Borough met the compliance, introduced a budget by the statutory date, and, um, it's been delayed a little now with the budget amendment, um, that is going to proceed to May seventeenth for a public hearing, and the budget after this amendment's going to be reviewed by the Department of Community Paris Division of Local Government Services, and it'll, uh, dictate whether they can adopt at that time, or if there's going to be another amendment required.
So any projects that are kind of being pursued after the budget, they have to wait still until, for example, you know, websites or something like?
Now, I, I think I can clarify, and I know that Ron can. Uh, you've heard us, because we've been at the meetings, we even talked a little bit on Sunday, uh, at, at Earth Day. Um, you've heard us pass resolutions called emergency budget appropriations, they're based on last year's budget, and I'm oversimplifying simply so Ron doesn't have to give you the complex version, uh, but oversimplifying, based upon last year's budget, this, the budget statutes and the fiscal law say that you use those as your, your projected operations for the quarters where you don't have the budget approved by, uh, the council and approved by DCA yet. Uh, so that's why you hear us, you know, it's, uh, some people sometimes say, well, why all of a sudden you're spending this money on an emergency? It's really not, it's just the statutory name. So the Borough has been funding those projects, everything is going along the same rate, uh, but it gets done that way by statute.
So, if I'm understanding correctly, anything that is yearly and been going on, um, has continued, and any new projects have to wait, any new projects that haven't been done before would have to wait for the new budget to be passed? Is that kind of how it works?
Well, what, what, what's in place is a temporary budget from January one through the date of the adoption of the, the permanent budget.
Right.
So in order to, and when the permanent budget is adopted, it has to include all the costs that were included in temporary budget. So programs that, um, hinge on the new budget being adopted, uh, a lot of times are put off until the budget's put in place because it's, if the budget, the final budget doesn't have those items in the budget, you know, it's, uh, uh, they won't be funded. So there's things that maybe, maybe, for example, like the website.
That's a perfect example, it's something I am not signing a contract with a, until we have this budget settled.
Right, the website is contingent on the budget that's been put in, the, the budget that's up for, uh, the public area and adoption is contingent on that succeeding. If for some reason that, uh, we had to go back and, um, reduce the budget, there are items that would have to be cut, and you don't know, you know, where you'd make the cuts.
Okay.
Right. So anything that's been paid from January one through the date of the adoption, we have to fund in that budget.
I have one other question.
Step to the microphone, please.
So, um, I haven't been to the last few meetings, but I've been watching them, and there's been a lot of discussion about, um, bias training, and, um, I know there was one comment at the last meeting, I believe, saying that now would be a good time to put in something in the budget for bias training, and, um, I'm just wondering whether anything was, or, um, is that something that's not possible, um, or if something was added in based on the last few meetings and discussions.
Well, I believe, and Elsie, you can, uh, add to this if you like, I believe that training has always been a part of the police department's budget.
The police department has always had a, a section of their budget that is dedicated to training and to diversity training, community police training, so all of that has been put into the budget. The training budget is, is well thought out as it pertains to community policing, um, various types of training, dealing with various, um, areas of the community, religious community and special needs community, so that has always been a part of the budget.
Okay, so nothing is different this year?
Right, yes.
That was just the clarification.
Yes, thank you.
Um, so, but there has been talk about implicit bias training, which has not been done, I believe, by the Borough. It is a specialized training, and I think it would probably cost additional money. Is that money going to be available?
I'm not sure it would cost additional money because there's already money in for training.
Right. So you would ship, I mean, there would be a decision that this is a preferred training and that?
Well, the, the police chief and, and, uh, the council liaison to public safety would make that decision.
So the, the, the training budget has been set up. A part of what the state does on the AG's office is that they have the clear training that's, um, mandatory. So we will be looking with the chief of the different types of training that is scheduled, and then we'll let you guys know what type of training, additional training that's out there, but I think just about all the training that is, um, that you're requesting and others are requesting, that's already included in our package.
Okay, because I, uh, somebody raised last meeting that the clear training had like a hundred and twenty slides and eight of them were on bias.
Right.
That's the mandatory, that's the state, uh, mandatory, mandated by the AG office, and that did not seem adequate, and that was not the equivalent.
Right, and the chief actually agrees with that.
Okay, so then, so then, yeah.
Um, Chief and I had a discussion, and we'll have more discussions, but there were more, more than just eight slides that was dedicated to bias training, and if you've been noticing the news that the, uh, the new AG that's in place, that what he's been doing is holding town halls to talk about bias and, uh, profiling and that kind of thing. On, I think it's June fourteenth that he's going to be at Middlesex.
It's in a venue.
The prosecutor's office over by Middle, behind Middlesex County College, that they're going to be having another forum on this because he's taking it across the state to address the issue. So, um, we'll put something up on the website for anyone who's interested in going and asking questions and seeing exactly what's being done, because it's not just here in Highland Park, this is one of the mission of Governor Murphy and the AG's office, that they really want to get people educated about the various types of biases.
Okay, okay, and one more question, because there was some confusion last council meeting about, um, the audits that were being done, and I think that, what I understood after the meeting is that the audit that you were talking about in terms of interviewing the three companies was a municipal audit and not what people in the community were calling for, an audit to look at the statistics of, uh, racial bias in our police department. So I want clarity on that because I think people left being very confused whether the Borough was going to make a commitment to do, to hire a company that had expertise in police bias statistics.
We, um, to be clear, we were going to look at a company, we're, we're looking at companies now that will be doing just that, looking at, um, biases in the police department, and to look at their standard operating procedures, and to take a look at how they operate and see if there is, they, they, they're going to come in and do the independent audit. They will also be meeting with community members to get their input as well.
Okay, so that, but we are talking about two separate things. There was a municipal efficiency audit, is what I understood afterwards, is that, what, was it pre?
Tina, can I explain?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, so there's two different things we're talking about here. One is an organization that specializes in bias training and bias analysis and that sort of thing, and then there's another that analyzes police procedures and that sort of thing, so, so there, we're looking at two different things by two different organizations.
Okay, well, the training clearly is a separate organization.
Correct.
But the, the, the confusion was, is this going to be an audit that, because Julie Luck got up and said she looked at the company, um, the website, and it didn't have any expertise in police bias, one of the companies who we're going to interview, and then it seemed like, well, you're talking about a municipal operational bu- uh, audit, and, and the community was talking about one that could look at statistics, so are we?
I, I think we're, we're talking about two separate, completely separate things, and I think, I think maybe in, you know, all the conversation, it got meshed into one, but it's two completely separate things.
And you're saying you are looking to hire a company that has expertise in looking at bias?
Correct, Elsie has already made some headway on that.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. It's a lot going on. Okay, um, may I have a motion to adjourn?
One second, Mayor, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
One more thing else?
One, the last thing from me tonight. Um, I wanted was to, and I, because we've been so busy with all the, the commentary at the council meeting and, and stuff like that, I just, this is something that I wanted was to bring, and to everyone's attention, that a civil rights activist for a very long time that has fought for human rights and was there with Nelson Mandela, um, fighting while he was locked up for all those years in prison, which is Winnie Mandela, she passed away on April second, and I meant to wear a turban because she meant, she wore a turban all the time, and, um, there is a, a movement this month that's a wear a turban for, um, Winnie Mandela because of her rights and the civil rights action to free the people of South Africa and to, to keep that torch going, and I would just like to have a brief moment of silence and remember of the great work that she did for all of humanity. Thank you.
And also just remind everybody, tomorrow, April twenty-fifth, Wear Denim Day.
And, and, uh, Elsie, you reminded me, I actually had the great privilege and honor of being in Trenton, New Jersey today when Governor Murphy signed into law the Diane Allen Equal Pay for Women, uh, legislation. It was an amazing, amazing afternoon, so, good things. And now, may I have a?
I have one more thing, sorry.
I have something, too.
Last, last meeting I did, actually because of the community forum with the AG's office and the Middlesex County Prosecutor Office, they moved to a bigger, um, venue because of the overwhelming response. Um, it's still June fourteenth, it's at Middlesex County College, it was at the Training, um, Academy, but it's at Middle, Middlesex County College, West Hall, um, Park View Room, um, twenty-six hundred Woodbridge Avenue, Edison, New Jersey, um, and it's six PM sharp, so I will be attending, hope to see you guys there.
Okay, thank you. So everybody kept their last things out?
I have, I have, I just have one, one quick thing. Um, uh, I just wanted to, you know, thank Tina and Abby for, for, for raising concerns about the, about the water and sewer rates. Um, it's something that, you know, we did not take lightly at all and had some serious, serious concerns about why, um, this overs, why, why we were artificially, um, why, why is water and sewer rates were artificially subsidized for so many years, and how we can prevent, uh, uh, being in this situation again moving forward. So I do think, uh, you know, we even looked at our own rates, I have, you know, I have three kids, you know, we, we're, as, 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 as much of a hippie family as we are, we, we, we do consume, uh, as well, so it's, uh, it was a real, it was, it was, it was a, you know, it's a very, it was a very difficult process, um, and certainly, um, you know, having Highland Park be accessible to a multitude of families of different socioeconomic backgrounds is, 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 is a real priority here, so people on fixed income, uh, families with kids, uh, lower income, uh, families, uh, looking out for those families is, is very, very important. Um, so, you know, our, our, so our kids can afford to live here, uh, you know, when, when, when we're here, and I just wanted to welcome, uh, baby Sierra, um, uh, new, new, uh, new Highland Park resident, uh, to Abby and Dylan Stern, currently now, congratulations. There, there are neighborhoods, and we look forward to more kids in the neighborhood. Um, but, uh, thank you for the questions, though, and, um, you know, uh, it's, we take it seriously and we're on it now, and I just want to, again, thank, uh, the mayor, the council president, and, and Terry for their hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second. Good night.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.